Leading to order. Uh, welcome here, I'd like to invite you to stand with us, we'd like to begin with a word of prayer and then, if you will, remain standing and join us in the pledge through the flag, please, let's bow together. Father, we glorify your name, thank you for this time, ask that you be in all that we do, direct us, guide us, help us to glorify you, uh, step by step. Continued bless those that are not here, pray a special blessing on Commissioner Holmes this morning. Pray this in Christ's name, amen. Join us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We certainly appreciate your attendance today and your interest in the business of the county, the commission. We have no scheduled public hearings, but we do have public comment scheduled and, uh, that's the first item on the agenda, so, Mr. Bateman, we have you scheduled, if you don't mind, come to the podium and, uh, as you likely remember, because you greeted us a couple of times, we have about a three-minute time limit and, uh, we'll op- open it up.
Thank you. Okay, uh, what I'm here to do is, uh, talk to you about the resolution twenty-two oh one, eleven oh one. And, uh, I dropped off some information to you folks, uh, and to all the commissioners, uh, what? Week and a half ago, two weeks ago, so you should have, uh, that information. Uh, first of all, I'd like to start by saying, uh, Second Amendment was ratified December fifteenth, seventeen ninety-one. First Supreme Court ruling on the Second Amendment was Marbury versus Madison. It said the United, and that wasn't on the Second Amendment, that was in entire Constitution. It says, "Supreme Court ruled that any law that is contrary to the Constitution, the law of the land is, which is the law of the land, is repugnant." What that means is in conflict, in conflict, and is incompatible with the Constitution. Uh, United States versus, uh, Crusoe Schenk, eighteen seventy-six. Supreme Court ruled that the right to bear arms is not granted by the Constitution, nor is it, is it in any manner dependent upon the instrument for its existence, the Second Amendment means no more than that, it shall not be infringed by Congress, and has no other effect than to restrict the powers of the national government. That means it's a right given by God. Uh, nineteen thirty-nine, United States versus Millier, Supreme Court ruled that Second Amendment did not protect weapon type, not having a reasonable relationship to the preservation or efficiency of a well-regulated militia. That means you should have the same weapon that the military has. Okay, you guys swore an oath when you took office, and I swore an oath ver- what was very similar to it. Says, "I solemnly swear I'll support the Constitution." My oath said I had to support and defend the Constitution, and I still live by it today, and I made that oath in nineteen eighty-three. Okay. I'd like to ask, uh, Ms. Cotton, in our judicial system, are all citizens of our nation considered innocent until proven guilty?
I suppose.
Okay, that's, that's the way it's supposed to be, right? Okay.
Well, not everyone, I mean, you'd have to be indicted for something before that would even apply.
We're-
And I don't know that you're, I mean, it's, it's not your burden, is, is-
It's on the burden of the state to prove them guilty, yes, okay. What we're talking about is constitutional carry, the state of Alabama. There's twenty-one states that have constitutional carry. I can drive from Mississippi, which is constitutional carry state, all the way to Idaho, that's my hometown. Uh, Georgia and Florida, both governors have stated if the legislature puts it on their desk, they'll pass it. Only reason you have to, if we didn't have constitutional carry Alabama, you would need a permit to go to Florida and Georgia right now, because they're not constitutional carry. But you can go to Ca- Tennessee, and you can go to Mississippi, and not have to have a permit, because they're constitutional carry for everybody that is legally able to obtain and own a firearm. No permits, no taxes. Uh, I don't know, uh, did you know pistol permit in Alabama? Out of the sixty-seven counties, twenty-two sheriffs did not do background checks on the people that they issued permits to. So, uh, there's no da- central database, you have no responsibility to tell the police officer that you have a permit, there's no responsibility, you have to tell them that you, uh, have, uh, concealed weapon in the car. You can have an AR fifteen with thirty-round mag in it, sitting on a passenger seat. If you have a pistol on the dashboard of that car, you don't have to have a permit. Mike Jones decided he wanted to, uh, co-sponsor that bill because of the twenty-two sheriffs, and he saw the other states doing it as well.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes, sir.
We're over the three minutes, by quite four, approaching four minutes, just-
Okay.
Condense it if you will, I don't want, I don't want to cut you off in midstream, though you have a lot-
I guess I thought I had ten, but, uh, I thought that I was on the agenda, I didn't realize-
Well, you are, you're, that's, that's just the standard rule.
Well, I'm, I'll hurry it up.
But yeah, just-
Shane Stringer, who was another, uh, member of the legislature in Montgomery, that co-sponsored the bill. Uh, he got fired for his beliefs, he was a captain in the sheriff's department. Because sheriff was against constitutional carrying, and he was for it, and he got fired for it. And he said, he didn't believe taxing the people was the right thing to do for a constitutional man. Uh, Mike Thurman said to me at the forum the other day, he said to me, he wouldn't mind if they just gave him away. He said that to me personally, I was standing right in front of him. Okay? And that, and I believe that you shouldn't, we shouldn't be charging people a tax for their constitutional rights. Okay, uh, let's see, each county rec- rec- regulates the cost of the permit, there's no standardization within the state of Alabama. There's no standardization of who has a permit, or a si- system that says who has a permit. So basically, I look at it as, I don't know whether you all knew, I don't know who brought that resolution to you. I, I understand that the sheriff brought it to you. I brought a resolution to you, I, I asked you to do sanctuary ca- county hearing in Covington. We also, and you said you couldn't do it, right, you said that? And I said, he, you said, "We can do resolutions," and I says, "Okay," so I brought a resolution to you to basically saying the same thing. And you told me that was contrary to the Constitution. Well, when I look at, I'm sorry, when I look at, uh, the, uh, resolution you put out, you put a lot of, there's a lot of words in there. And you say you support this and you support that. But the thing of it is, when you say that you support it, you also at the same time tell me you don't support the Constitution. You say you support the Second Ammen- Amendment, but you work for public safety. The governor did that once he closed the churches here. We're gonna close the churches because of public safety. Public safety in my book is what liberals put out and rhinos. It's virtual signaling. It's like, "We wanna take care of the kids, but we're gonna abort the kids." "We're gonna close your churches."
We are, uh, we're seven minutes in.
Okay, I understand.
And I don't want to cut you short, but why are you, why are you there, let me ask the-
My, my point is, I believe that they violated the Constitution when they did this resolution.
Okay.
Not only of Alabama, but the United States of America, because in the, if you look at that, if you look at the Alabama Constitution about firearms, the only people that can make the laws is the legislature or state of Alabama.
And that's exactly the point we had earlier in our, in our previous meetings, that, uh, we don't make the law. Our resolution was not, uh, putting in place a restriction or anything else, it simply expressed the, the will of the body, uh, in support of or opposed to a particular issue that was being considered by the legislature. It had nothing to do with putting an ordinance or anything else in place, so-
Do you know who supports the Alabama Sheriff's Association? Do you know, do you know who get, they get financing from? The Bloomberg and Agony agenda. And, and Mr. Timmons, who's the spokesperson and director of the Alabama Sheriff's Association, has stated that he doesn't believe that you should be able to have a firearm outside of your home.
Well, anybody have questions, particularly on this?
Not, no, uh, I just, pretty much what we've, that, we, he has the sheriff, in order to do anything, has to go through us, so we allowed him to write permits, the way I, I want to say it. And whatever the legislation comes up with, you know, that's fine with us, but we need to have it where our sheriff can operate till that happens, you know, whatever, every has been run, we need to make sure it's in guidelines, you know, that's, that's, you know, that's what we have to do, make sure we stay in a guideline. Through the state and whatever things have come before, so, that's the only thing, we're trying to make it where, yeah, if he's gonna have to write permits, yeah, we say write them, but whenever they tell us at the legislature that they, we ain't got to charge for them, we won't charge, I mean, that's, that's got to be handed to us, so we can do it, we can't make them decisions on this board, we can't make any laws or anything, that's up to the governing body that's up there now, so, we gotta conform to what we doing right now, to, to the best we can, with what, what we can do, till that changes, that's what we, we kinda have to do to make it legal for him to do permits, you know.
Anybody else have comment?
And I think what you're saying is, is that that original permit, just to begin with, was un- in your view is unconstitutional, so therefore is just null and void on its face, is that kind of-
If you go by the constitutional rulings of the Supreme Court in the past, it's repugnant to the, to the Constitution, because when you read the Second Amendment, it says, "Shall not be infringed." A sixth grader knows what "shall not be infringed" means.
Well, there's a, there is a lot of debate in there, even in the legislature right now, I know that they've had three or four days worth of discussion and debate in committees and on the floor, so-
But I sure hope Alabama, eh, hate to say it, but I hope they pass it, because I don't want to be the only state sitting in with everybody else passing it. And we're sitting here, us, uh, you know, a state that doesn't have, uh, you know, we still got blue laws, we still got, uh, no lottery, you know. We just, we don't want to be the backward state. I don't believe, we, we should go with the mainstream, but twenty-one states?
Anyone else have a comment, question? If not, thank you, Mr. Bateman.
Thank you for the welcome.
Yep, all right, absolutely, sorry to cut you off short. Public comment from other elected officials, Judge, you have anything?
No, sir.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes, sir, we're gonna mail out about fifteen hundred United States certified mails tomorrow. Probably tax and have it up in the head.
All right, thank y'all, uh, we have nothing under the consent agenda this, this time, uh, under old business, we had brought up a board appointment for the Department of Human Resources and, uh, I think the opening was in, uh, somewhat on the District Four area, so Tommy, you have something that you wanna bring, bring to the table?
Yes, um, I spoke with, uh, with Kristy Hildreth and asked her if she would be, uh, willing to sit on the board, uh, with DHR, and she agreed to that, and it was brought to, uh, Ms. Rathel, and I believe she has agreed to it also, so I'd like to make a motion that we add Kristy Hildreth to the board.
So, appoint Kristy Hildreth, uh, to the open seat, is there a second?
I say.
Anybody else have a nomination or a name you'll bring, if not, we can vote on that, uh. It's a four-year term, you re- do you recall?
Six, I think.
Six-year term?
Six-year term.
All right, glad to have Lisa here, if any of you have questions for her, she can certainly answer them, if not, we won't, we won't put her on the spot, but we do appreciate the work y'all do, Lisa. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sound. That's, that's what was made. Uh, next item, uh, under new businesses, consider county levies for al- alcohol licensing, pages two and three in your packet. And, uh, Karen, you wanna give us a rundown of what we're dealing with?
This is an annual, uh, s- um, approval that we have to give to the ABC Board, and basically, we always go with the maximum amount of county fees, uh, so you can see that on page two of your, of your packet, and of course, it's listed again on page three to show in the, uh, cost of each of the type license. We usually deal with more of the retail beer on the off-premises, and occasionally you'll have, uh, on premises, but, um, that's basically the rates that we have to prove each year and let the state know that.
So the recommendation is that we just renew the rates as, as they were the prior year?
Right.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Michael? Anybody have a question on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sound. Okay, passed. Karen, I'm gonna put you on the spot again, I'm gonna bring you up for the Consider Agreement for the Jail, pages four, five, and six, since I don't see the sheriff in your-
I was looking as well. Um, I'll tell you what I know about it, the proposal that's in your packet came from the sheriff's department, it's basically part of the, the store. Uh, they're changing the process, and it allows for a debit card type issuance to each of the inmates, so that they have this record of, uh, the money can be added, and it's just basically to simpli- simplify the prod- process with a new system. And so, uh, as you all are aware, the sheriff cannot enter any contracts, so it has to be before y'all took proof.
So presently, the system allows them to bank money that's tracked, and this just takes it out of that bank ac- you know, the bank account?
From what I understand, if it's on a card type.
Is there any fee associated with what account?
Well, not that we deal with, um, there may be something, because this whole setup with the store, it all goes to the sheriff's department, and I don't know the details, the ins and outs.
So he's-
But there's no cost to the county general fund budget, if it's anything, it's part of the store process.
That account's one of his accounts?
Yes.
So it's just an, from, from our end, it's an administrative oversight during this agreement, uh, it's just, he's already doing the same work, a little different approach, putting it on a debit card in effect, so. I think we should approve, approve the contract and move forward unless you see something on it that raise, raises concern.
Of course, as you see, it shows how many, two-hundred-and-twenty-five is the amount of cards they expect to issue per month.
I would recommend that we approve it with Karen, uh, observing any final, if the change, if there's a change in documents or something, issue, uh, just initial for us. Otherwise, just prove it as presented.
All right, I'll, like I said, we've, I'll prove it with-
With Karen's oversight?
Making sure you have her with oversight, so, then you think it needs to be reconsidered.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Anybody have a question on it? You want to ask the sheriff anything, he's not here. There is a motion, uh, and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sound. All right, that's passed. Uh, we have several vehicle items, uh, a couple of them, I guess, uh, Karen, tell, give us the details on that.
Uh, the next request is a request from the sheriff to, uh, purchase two vehicles from his law enforcement fund. I know they had several that they're trying to get ready for surplus, some have already been deemed surplus, and they're in a need for a de- adding two more, and of course, they've already purchased the general fund amount allowed, and so this will be coming out of their law enforcement fund.
Do you have any idea what kind?
I was told Ford Explorers, but then I was told they were sold by the time they reached back out, so I'm thinking they're thinking-
I would wait till we talk with the sheriff to see.
Yeah.
So hold that till the next meeting under old business, all right, we'll move that forward unless there's somebody wants to do different than that. So the consensus is to carry that forward to the next meeting. Uh, consider purchase of vehicles for maintenance department, page seven, Commissioners in your book.
Uh, this is a truck, uh, for point A maintenance, um, they're currently using a vehicle that was donated to, uh, us from the state DMA office, and it was a sport utility type vehicle, and based on the type work, they, they do, we need, um, a truck so they can haul the lawn equipment and such, and we've looked at the price of used vehicles versus, versus the new, and we can get a new twenty-two Ford F-150 crew cab, two-wheel drive, for twenty-eight, seven fifteen, and Kevin's group is real good about taking care of their vehicles, and I think it'd be a good investment.
All right, so is there a motion to, uh, approve the purchase of this vehicle as requested?
Was this in the budget either, or?
He had, uh, budgeted for a portion of it, so it will be, uh, uh, part of it will be coming out of contingency, the other part was, was budgeted. He had intended to purchase a used one.
I make a motion, we'll do it.
Mr. Patterson? All right. We have a second?
Second.
Time. Is this gonna free up one to, uh, to declare surplus as well, or is that a later action?
It, it could, but it also could be a backup, it could be moved to another department.
All right, so you're bringing that back to us?
Yes.
Okay. Same with the two in the sheriff's department, we're gonna consider-
We have to, yeah, that's, that'll be later.
The items that are be declared surplus, okay.
A little bit later, yes.
We're not trying to incre- increase the fleet that we want, keep it in line, all right. So there's a motion, uh, to approve the maintenance department purchase, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sound, this case. All right, but we do have a couple of items for, uh, declare surplus in the appraisal department, engineers department.
Uh, the engineer has, um, I'm sorry, the appraisal office has two trucks, they've just recently got new vehicles, um, Kevin was going to look at one of those pickups, uh, but then we found this other newer truck. So I talked with Ron last week, and he wasn't sure if, if Lynn was interested in possibly, uh, getting both of these trucks for his department, so the appraisal trucks would just be-
So it's probably gonna be a transfer as opposed to surplus?
It's gonna be a transfer, but it's a state, his budget, a state budget, so they will have to, to monetary-
Okay.
Uh, at their market value.
So we declare them surplus? Is that the procedure?
We'll do a transfer, I wasn't sure if it was, if Lynn was gonna want them, so we'll need to transfer those to the-
Okay, so where do-
From appraisal to engineering.
So there's a motion to transfer those two vehicles as needed. All right, motion, second, Mike? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sound, all right? And then you have somebody gonna surplus and sell?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, um, you want me to go over those, or do you want to?
We can come up with it now.
That'd be fine.
Yeah, that'd be good, call. We'll keep you up here a minute or two.
Uh, with, with the market like it is right now, we're looking at, at possibly going, getting rid of our three international trucks that we had, one's our old, um, service truck, fuel truck that we had for our countywide equipment, and we converted it back to a dump truck, which what it, what was, we sold to S.A.S., uh, back, I think in the oh-eight, whenever those trucks were, we bought those trucks. But, uh, I'd go and surplus those three, there's three of them, and you got the VIN numbers there in front of you, but they're all, all the same. Um, I think we can get a pretty good sale price, with things looking there at the wood auction, so we're gonna put those in the sale, um, this March au- in, in March.
So the request is to declare these three surplus and then to, uh, put them in the wood au- next wood auction?
Yes.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Motion and second, anybody have questions on that? Do you have any, any thought on what those might bring, have you looked that closely at it? But wood usually is strong in the used equipment, used truck markets, so I think it'll bring a top dollar, and that's the way we have to dispose of it by auction, so. There's motion and second, if nothing else, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sound. All right. So, Lynn, let's, let's just take the very next item, uh, since you're gonna be real, uh, impacted by that. There's a request for approval of Harrison Family Cemetery, I'm gonna ask the attorney to give us some thoughts on that, and then we'll see what you're, that you have, Lynn, related to that.
Um, I've spoken with the probate judge this morning, and also with Lynn, and I believe we're all on the same page, that there are some criteria and guidelines that have to be met in order for the commission to either approve or deny the permit, is that correct?
That's correct.
Um, I'm assuming they have a copy of this, or do we know how to contact them to make sure they know the-
I've been in contact when I reviewed it, and, uh, the health official, um, sent me the, the guidelines, they abide by. There's been some change in the, in the, in the requirement by the state, and Steph brought a good point, I gotta research a little bit more. But the ones that I'm more concerned of, um, are the, is the location, um, of actual burial lots, uh, plots there, and it meets all requirements, I'm reviewing the, the cemetery, I've already got with the surveyor, and we've had to, we're gonna have to move one corner of this from what, I don't know if you actually got a copy of the, of the cemetery plot there, but, um, one, the southeast, southeast corner's gonna have to be moved just, just slightly to, to, to make these corrections. The, the surveyor's already contacted the landowners, the Harrison family about this, they're, they're okay with it, so, I just request, you know, they, they did petition us, uh, the Harrison family emailed me to, to get this, um, a, uh, approved by the county commission, so-
So the, the procedure is to petition who?
Through the probate court.
Okay.
And, and then from there, she will, um, require, uh, some sort of environmental testing, and Judge Brooks is-
Actually, it has to be approved by the probate judge and by the county commission, so I think it would be, they should file that simultaneously, and then under the law, there has to be some sort of study done to see how it's going to affect the water supply and everything surrounding the cemetery before the county commission and myself can make a decision.
Which looks like it's the only guidelines that you're to look at for approving or denying.
Do you want us to do that study, you know, how, make sure that stays done, or you wanna do that?
I actually think the landowner-
The land, landowner, yeah.
The teachers are responsible for that.
You're gonna review that, or would you like us to review?
I think we both do.
Yeah, I think it should go-
So it's gonna submit the same thing back to both of us?
It should go through the probate court for you to approve or deny, and then from there, I would think that you bring it and recommend whether or not it should be approved or denied.
The way the code is written, they, they ask, it's filed with the county commission and the probate judge, so I think-
So it's simultaneous.
Do that simultaneously, and then we can discuss it if we need to, and then it can be reset after the meeting.
And I have the contact information for the landowner, so I can get ahold of the family, so-
Probably need to.
So, it, so the guidelines are still in place, even though there's been some change at the state side of it, and generally, that's, uh, no, no gray, closer than thirty-five feet from the property boundary, no closer than a hundred feet to a private well, so there are a number of factors to consider, and then it has to be recorded, I think, at probate when it's all over, so that forever it will be reflected as a cemetery, so. All right, we'll communicate back to them on, on that, if y'all will. All right, um, anybody have any questions on that before we move on? Uh, preliminary approval for twelve oak subdivision, Lynn, what's, what you have there?
This is an older subdivision that Ashley brought, I think, for prelim- preliminary approval back, I think in, I think it's probably two thousand eight, summer of two thousand eight, or maybe just prior, because I think our digital records only go back till, I think, oh nine, I believe, what Karen mentioned earlier this morning, we couldn't find it in our archives, but, uh, uh, this, this, I think we almost hun- hundred percent sure this was done, like I said, back in oh eight, and we did get prelim- preliminary approval. Um, the road has already been, we have, Darren and I approved the, the road construction, the plans, and then the, the road construction. A local contractor built the road, the road's in good shape, it's been in good shape for thirteen years, uh, it's still, it's still a good-looking road. Um, but I, just for the sake of time, I know some of the lots have changed dimensions, um, and I'd request that we do that, uh, get preliminary approval, and kinda just wipe the slate clean and come back again with the preliminary approval, that way I can go and get the, the documentation out to the joint landowners and start going through procedures again, as if it was more of a, like a new subdivision.
Okay. So you're asking for a preliminary approval from us today?
Yes, I have a preliminary plat, um, that they have sent me.
Okay.
And, uh, um, that way I can go and start the, the paperwork process and get into the landowners, the joint landowners', uh, contact, let them be aware of the-
So, we're not repeating work, you didn't do that in the earlier phase, like put a stop on it?
Like, like I said, I don't know how far we cared, but it's been, like I said, it's been, oh, about thirteen years, I don't know, so-
So is there a, a motion to give preliminary approval on this, uh, on the development of the subdivision?
I'll make a motion.
I'll say.
Okay. Uh-
And this will require, you know, approval from the health department as well, so-
And ultimately, we'll, we'll have to accept that street?
Yes.
And you're saying that it meets our code?
Yes.
Standards, so, okay. There's a motion, second, if there's nothing else, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sound, okay. All right, next is, uh, related to the purchase of some motor graders, we reached the end of a lease on our current fleet.
This month, yeah.
And we're, so we're need, because of supply issues across the world, we're, we're having to, we're, we're gonna be delayed on the new ones, the new replacement ones that we have on order, and so Lynn's found a way to carry us from today till the end of the year, when the others come in. Tell us what you have identified.
Well, this'll be, uh, I have John Witherton with, uh, Flint Equipment this morning, he's their representative here, and, uh, through our source well, the joint cooperative bid throughout the nation, um, the source well bit has the right to, to sell, um, used equipment as well, as, as much as, as rented. Um, you know, we, our rental, um, is with Caterpillar, and no, well, they're supposed to pick up in March, but due to the availability, it's gonna be pushed probably till November, December, if we can get our new machines, and we gotta have something to fill the gap. So I'm requesting this morning that we purchase, uh, these eight motor graders, um, um, for, uh, I think, one million and thirty-eight thousand dollars. Um, you know, we'll run these machines until the, and this will put us in our new year, we will have to borrow the money for the- Um, you know, we'll run these machines until the, and this will put us in our new year, we will have to borrow the money for this, 'cause it wasn't a budget item that we had, but, uh, um, but we, uh, I feel that we'll get pretty much get our money back at, at, for these machines at the end of, um, when the new ones, that's for lease, come available for us, and we'll sell those again, probably at the wood auction.
I think Karen has identified, uh, uh, money that we'll be able to use internally, and there, so it'd be an internal loan from one fund to, to another, is that right?
That's correct.
So we wanna actually go out and, for a bank loan or financing, and just, we'll cover it. So a million thirty-eight thousand dollars for how many units?
For eight units, by request that we make this, make this purchase.
What's, you say that, that, that it could also be leased, or just purchased through the, um?
Well, these machines are a little bit older, some of these machines have, um, they got some hours on them, some, some of them do, two of, two do not, that's why the cost went up a little bit from what I, I gave Karen, I think, last meeting. But, uh, um, but, uh, they're, they are used machines, but we got to get something, gotta have some, something to work with, because they got, they gotta put these other ones back in their fleet, all our rent, our lease agreements with John, with Flint now, um, those have gotta go back, that's, that was our contract with them on that, on that lease agreement, so we gotta either purchase or do motor graders for about eight months, so I'd rather get the eight motor graders.
One of them's marked as new on here, on page fourteen. Third one's on the bottom. But it already has twenty-four hundred hour.
What page?
Fourteen. I just, I'm assuming it's a typo, it's not new, right? Typo?
Yes.
Okay, so it's used.
So it's about five twenty-sixteen units and three twenty-eighteen units, and resale, should, I, I'm, I'm sure that resale will stay very, very strong on those, so.
Yes. Yeah, it's three instead of two, that's correct.
So we need a motion to, uh, approve this purchase. We did have, within the budget, we did have, uh, a lease or financing type purchase of, on the ones that you've ordered, they just aren't coming in, so really, we're just rolling this into that slot that was.
And this will carry into our next budget year as well, so.
So we need a motion to move forward with this, and it, actually, let me, just to be clear, it gives us one more grader than we have now, so increase, increase our fleet by one, which will allow us to do the new paving and stuff that we have coming up.
Yes.
So, easier. Continue to keep up with our routine maintenance, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion and second? Questions?
When will they be here?
The, the, these used ones?
Yeah.
I think you got one coming with upon approval, upon approval.
There's one on my yard now, and the other's seven, we're working on mobilization now, and, uh, I would say within the next probably two weeks, we should be able to have them on the ground and evolve.
And the other ones will be given up at about that same time?
Yes.
Within that two-week window?
All right, and there, some, some of the graders are meet, are reached, have reached their, um, um, the hours that we had set up for the lease agreement, so.
The first five shows a John Deere extended warranty, I'm assuming you ran out of space to add that to the other three, so they're covered the same.
Those be, yeah, those.
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Have you considered leasing, or is there any?
Yeah, we've, we, we have, we've, we've, the ones we're getting rid of now, we're under a five-year lease, it was a great program, but we compare lease to cost, uh, lease to own, you know, every time we do a, an equipment transition, so.
But the new ones, we did lease, we'd got new ones leased, but they, they're not available until the November.
They were scheduled for delivery now, but it just didn't come.
We've even, we've even pre-ordered, we've even pre-ordered, uh, these leased machines well in advance, we felt would be in, in enough time, but due to the.
So this is a temporary fix?
Supply chain's issues, we, the new, the ones we got leased won't be here till, till November, so.
Our experience has been that when you sell these at auction, that they will return that money really close to us, so it'll be a, a real minimal cost to us on a per-hour operation.
Yeah.
Anybody else have anything? There's a motion and a second?
Yeah.
If there's nothing else, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, Karen, all right?
It's just one of these things we gotta end it.
It's just, it wasn't expected, but it's something we gotta do.
It's just, you know, what we're facing across the whole United States right now, everywhere, you know?
Supply chain's become an issue.
That's Witherton talking about, he can't get parts, he can't, he can't even run his business.
Yeah.
He, so, we fell into something that we can't help, I mean, we gotta have graders. Our roads is being neglected, and so we got to get back on them, so we got to do something.
Yeah, what do, what are you seeing on, on, uh, used prices at auction, are they staying relatively strong?
They are really better than strong currently, and, and a lot of that's got to do with supply chain.
Yeah.
Quote, um, they, they, they are very strong right now, and will, will hold their strength probably through this, what we're going through as far as supply chain issues.
Yeah.
Um, we have, uh, as far as, we, we've actually had to go into our rental fleet and start selling equipment out of our rental fleet to try to cover
Yeah.
some of, some of the shortcomings that we've seen, so.
And what's the delivery date on the new ones?
Uh, it should be, it's gonna be probably in November, what, uh, Caterpillar told us, all right?
All right, we approve that, what's next on?
Um, it's not on the agenda, but also, uh, it's part of the, the, uh, the lease agreement with, with, uh, Flint on the, on the ones we have now. Um, a lot of those graders, they, the graders gotta have like fifty percent wear on the tires, and we've got some that are, that we're gonna have to make emergency purchase, because of the availability of these tires, I gotta make emergency purchase on about twenty, twenty or so tires to, to, to get new.
To bring them back where we're required to sell?
To bring them back where they can, yes.
Or to return them, uh, and that's because we, we've attempted to arrange for an annual bid on those tires, but that's just been impossible.
Well, it's availability right now, it's, the thing right now is just availability, 'cause like I said, we gotta have these by the end of the month, and, uh, a local, one of the local guys here in town can get us the, there's only a state, they only give such allotment for the, for the whole state, and if we didn't grab it, um, then, um, we wouldn't be getting the tires, so.
So what's, do you know how much per tire, or what the total purchase is?
I don't have that from, I know it's, it's in, it's in, uh, tr- twenty reins of tires, so I know it's, you know, twenty-something tires we gotta get.
So we need to approve an emergency purchase to, uh, bring these back to the required standard for re- returning, uh, end of the lease? There a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion and second?
Second.
Questions, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, it passes, so that's approved, what else, Lynn?
Uh, we're just, uh, that's pretty much all I have for the agenda, we're working on Strong School Road and, uh, Point A Road, that's gonna be two of the roads we're gonna pave this, uh, hopefully this summer, through our rebuild, uh, transportation plan that we have. Um, uh, a lot of ditch cleaning going on, and a lot of people are upset about that, but I mean, it's just part of progress that we're gonna do to, to get these, our drainage ways back open for these new drainage projects, for the new paving projects, so.
So it's resurfacing projects that we're doing on those two?
Yes.
Any questions for Lynn, while he's here? One oh-seven?
On one oh-seven, uh, I got an email, and I've already corresponded, Stephanie, after the last meeting, um, we were waiting for the, uh, deed red lines from the, um, from the, from the company, and she and I addressed all those concerns that she had and that I had. Um, and since then, I sent those back, and since I got a, um, uh, an email, uh, Wednesday, um, this past Wednesday, about five days ago, uh, it says right here that we, uh, they have approval, they do have approval, they already have from Twin Oaks, uh, Twin Creek's timber to move forward, and, uh, it's, it's, they've started forward now to their closing attorney, uh, the one, or the, who's gonna be overseeing the, the, the closing of it, so I'm just waiting to, to hear back from, from them, but it has already gone through their, their company, we're just now waiting approval from, uh, this, this guy, to get the deed signed.
To get the deed signed.
But this happened, like I said, this past week, um, this, I got this back from them Wednesday, so.
All right. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, yes, sir. Uh, next item, uh, business is an IT consulting agreement, Karen, do you or Eric wanna?
We'll defer that there, Eric.
Eric, what, tell us about that. He's been wanting to come up.
He has.
The agreement in front of you is a, uh, it's a consulting agreement for our Adtrans switches, we have, uh, about twenty-one switches in service right now, that's what provides each of our machine's internet. Um, the agreement will cover all maintenance inquired on that, which is software support, firmware updates, things like that, the only thing that it does not cover is lightning strikes, floods, things that, you know, our facility would cause, or, you know, any kind of unmanned issue, so, um, part of the agreement also is they're gonna work with one of our vendors and do an account review, so to speak. There's some things that we're being charged for in regards to these Adtrans switches that we need some clarification on, and they're gonna work and try to find savings for us that way. Um, it's four hundred dollars monthly, or we can choose to pay one time annually, uh, this is a budgeted item, so I have the money in my budget for this.
So re- renewal, in effect, a renewal of something already in place, or not?
Yes, we, we have something similar in place, but not this exactly, um, so this will be replacing the similar thing we have in place, um, and then also, they're trying to work with us to find savings that we can incur throughout the year as well. Like I said, it is a budgeted item, just need approval.
It's four thousand or four hundred a month you can pay out.
So forty-four hundred, it looks like is the total price?
Yeah, it's four hundred per month times twelve months, you either, so, you can pay monthly or annually, whichever we decide.
So there's a need to approve, uh, entering this agreement for, for support on, as he mentioned. I'm gonna make a. There's a motion, Kenneth's second. Michael?
Yes.
Questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Uh, anybody else, Rachel, you, Susan, have anything? Miss Stephanie?
I don't have anything.
Thank you. Uh, commissioners, what else do you have?
I would like to bring up something, I know I spoke with some other commissioners, and some one-to-one conversation about the commission adopting some kind of resolution or memorandum, what it would have to, that no commissioner can, and it protects everyone, no one, the actual commission can enter to, enter into an agreement or give the persuasion that we may enter into an agreement with a, an outside party without the vote embodied, this commission to vote on it.
I think that's, isn't that already in place from years past?
No.
Thought that had been done about six years ago, so.
No. Actually, I don't, the only thing I know about was the, um.
Airport.
Airport.
Okay, I thought it was broader than, I thought it was the whole, I thought it was just a general little.
I don't, I mean, I don't know nothing.
Okay. So do you have something drafted?
No, but, um, I would like to work with Stephanie.
Okay, it'll be fine, move forward.
Me and Karen, someone.
Yeah, anybody have input on that, or, so, so you just get with Stephanie, if you will, if you bring that back as a, as a document for proposal, I think it'd be appropriate, but.
That includes the chairman too.
The, the whole commission.
The whole commission.
All right, is there?
I've got some.
Yeah, okay, what you have?
Cookies with characters, they're having their show at the arena this weekend, uh, I think they have Saturday and Sunday events, and then also, next week, we are going to have a group of, um, eighth graders from all over the southeast that will be coming for a career expo out at the arena, so that's, it's, um, they're, I guess, field trip, and it's exciting for us to be able to host that this year.
I do, um, want everybody to have, you know, Miss Carrie Castleberry, you know, lost her mom, and, uh, I want everybody to be thinking about the family and their loss, and my hearts go out to them. Just hate, people has to go through these times, but they do.
All right, anybody else? If not, motion to adjourn will be in order, back to the, standing.